Hi.
Hi, Bill.
Rickman.
Aye.
All right, so can we start with the first row? I know you you were here early if you want to.
I'm second row, right?
I don't think I'll take my full three minutes, but I thank you, I guess, for entering the proposed tax rate. And as the valuations increase, we all pay more.
Can't name.
And there's Roger Boersman, 324 University Circle, Council of Council. One five one three. So, as I said, thank you for proposing lowering the tax rate, but as valuation increased, we all paid more out of pocket anyways. And I've been considered a small farmer by most standards. And with our increase, if I figured right, we're going to be paying $377,000 more per year in in our taxes. The larger farmers will be paying five, 10 times that, which agriculture in these coming years is not going to be very profitable with the prices we have to pay for everything and commodity prices going down. So there's not going to be that much money available to pay extra taxes. If I figured right, it looks like you're going to be taking in about just under 1% more money than than what you did last year for for what you. I guess everybody in here is probably under the same opinion. We don't want to pay more taxes. I'll even it down.
Thank you, Roger. Next. This is a public hearing. It's the opportunity to hear from the public.
My name is Larry Pyman. I live at 309 North Builder at Carson. And I want to thank you for this mailing hearings. It was kind of nice and pretty nice. When I read through it, looked at the back, I thought there was a conflict of information. In the front, we're raising taxes, and I'm not I don't not going to comment there. And the tax rate goes down. But when you do a little calculating here, the whole valuation in order to come up with the money you need has to go up. Now, in the back, for the examples given, you use the same valuation for the current taxes and the new valuation for the same valuation could be lovely. And it shows that the taxes go down. Now, you're going to spend about 6% more with the taxes going down, and when it's far from dated fast. Okay? So. When we got in March of '23, got the.
That's right. Good job.
It's good. Okay.
Are we good?
Yeah, yeah.
All right, Larry.
March of '23, I got an increase in this in assessing valuation, and I understand that's different than tax rates. The farmland went up 37% on this example, and the house in town went up 26%. And so I I have. My concern is the message on the front is different than the one on the back, and that goes to you guys' credibility. And I see at the bottom, there's someplace to contact in Des Moines. And I chose not to do that. I come here because of your credibility and state. That's all I have.
Great. Thank you, Larry. Next.
Hello, Duane Barrier, 26 West River Village. I also have properties in the Old District and Crainer District. Just to give you some numbers that I've seen similar to what he just said, your budget went up 41.6 million to 43.9, and it's a 5.4% increase. Does that sound right? And if I'd like to know what you're spending that on, because a lot of people I know that are retired don't get that much of an increase. And I think for each of our cities and our counties and our schools, they need to go back to a zero-based budgeting instead of just increasing year over year. Maybe rethink how we're, you know, spending our money, because that is very important to everybody in the county. Also, assessments went up. You know, my one property went up 40%, another one up 23%. You know, state doesn't doesn't give us a very good way of calculating because they have to roll back on top of that. I do appreciate you guys lowering your rate, but at the same time, the assessment going up so high, you know, in the increases of people's taxes. So is there one guru that really knows, you know, how all that calculation comes through and how much, you know, that's affecting people? I I don't think that's the case. So Iowa needs to simplify their tax revenues. I also would recommend that the the city has a nice tax calculator out there on their website, that maybe you can put that on the county website, too, so people in the county knows how to calculate the taxes. But if you can comment on what the increase of 5.4% is, where that money's going, that would be appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you, Duane.
Diane McMakin, 626 Ridge Road North, here in Council of Austin. You can see I have several different school districts that take utilize our tax dollars. I do know everything that's been said so far. And citizens, the bottom line is every year that we come in and pay our property taxes, I'm paying more on every house and every farm out there. And yet, everything with inflation, our income is not going up, if anything, is being utilized and going down. I'm not sure. I know that the obviously the school district are asking for more along with the city. I do know that, remember back in 2000 roughly, circa there, 1% sales tax was voted on. All that went to the schools. I'm assuming that that's still in effect. I have not seen a rollback when I go and buy groceries or clothing, whatever. So that is still in effect. The schools are getting all of that. We voted on a bond that remodeled Kern and Wilson. I know we went through remodeling AL and TJ. And it just seems like every year, then we need more, 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 more. Well, what about businesses who have to budget their money? That there's a place us as people, you know, household, we have to budget. We have to live within our budget. And I would ask that the schools and the city and the county all learn the same, do the same that we all have to do, whether it's a small business, a large business, or a citizen household. We budget, and we have to live within that. And if it means making some cuts somewhere, we just have to do it, you know? So taxes again, I pay more every year. That's the main line. And I look at that bottom line, and I bless their hearts for being able to point out all the details. I'm just telling you, I'll show you my checks. I pay more all the time. And somewhere along the line, this has got to stop, especially with inflation the way it is. It has to stop because it's not a good trend, and we need to reevaluate. Thanks. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Who's next?
Tell me, spell your last name, please.
McMakin, M C M A K E N.
Who's next?
Remember, you came here to speak, and now's the time to speak. And I learned something many years ago. Come speak your piece, whether your voice shakes or not. So please step forward.
I just have a simple question.
Yeah.
Randy Canal, Tiju November Echo Lima Lima. Six military. 1985. Northern Pine Road. Why's the meeting at 10 o'clock in the morning? You know, you got a lot of people here, but I bet most of them are retired. What about all the people who are working? They can't make this. You got a few people who come in on the computer. How about doing a nighttime meeting?
We we have done a few of them.
Well, I think as important as this is, it should be mandatory that it's a nighttime meeting, so that people tend to express their concerns or whatever. So that's all. Just let's put them at night where people are rather than, you know, eight to five. Thank you.
Thank you.
Randy? Next.
Mary Deason, 19298 Jefferson Avenue Crescent. I'm really not going to say anything more. I thought Diane really hit it, what she said. I think it's how all of us feel. Every time you turn around, everything is going up. A lot of us are retired, but what I make is not going up. I agree with her and everybody else. We we have a budget at home if you have to follow. And the answer is not every time something happens to increase the tax stuff. I mean, I look at the top, what they just passed, that trillion dollars is just to me unheard of, what we're doing as a country. So to me, it has to stop, start here. And no one likes to have things cut, but I think we need to look at it, whether it's the school district or our county or whatever. It's got to start someplace. And if you're able to articulate why it has to be, I I think people understand, because I agree with her, the inflation, it's gotten out of hand, and that's why I'm here. And I'm not really speaking anything that anyone doesn't know. I don't know what the answers are, but I think it's important that we start dealing with it, because, like I said, it's getting out of here. Thank you.
Thanks, Mary. Next.
County Board only has jurisdiction over the levy. That's all we can do is work the levy, so.
Shawna Anderson, 19377 340 East Street. I don't plan on speaking during this. Usually I stay here and listen to the board speak and see what's going on in the county. I learn a lot, and sometimes I speak at public comment at the end of the meeting. But I do find this interesting. I know that, you know, with inflation, things have gone up. I expect my tax dollars to go up. It's just unfortunately, I like the you're born, you pay taxes, you die, right? But listening to some of you speak about the differences in paying attention to your budget, I will say the county has a budget, and some of that budget could be cut. Some of our county officials are paid six-figure salaries and have plenty of employees doing that work for them. So I will say that, you know, most of this board voted against raising their own salaries, which was pretty amazing. Not all of the support. So pay attention to those things before you go to the voting booth, because plenty of these folks here are making quite a bit of our tax dollars. So sometimes it's not about just increasing or decreasing our taxes. It's looking at where our tax dollars are being spent. You know, those schools, unfortunately, the state is setting their funding left and right, so our county is stuck at making up. You know, I I will be the the person who goes against everybody and, you know, devil's advocate here. Our county is trying to make up for what the state and what the federal government is cutting when it starts. They can't here, I'll stand up for them. But looking at what some of the county officials are making, there there could be a lot of cuts there. So just, you know, I I would just say to the public to pay attention to that. And the job that the county does sitting up here is definitely hard. So paying attention to what they're looking at makes a big difference when you get those letters in the mail. Thank you.
Hey, Shawna. Anyone else?
I have one point I forgot. May I come up second time?
Diane McMakin, 626 Ridge Road North, Council of Austin, Iowa. I did have on my notes here the that she brought up about the tax, that money is following the students now to whether they choose the a private school or homeschooling. I'm not sure how all that works, but I do know that money's following. And I had that on my list here, and I'm sure that caused a shock to the public school systems. However, are we remembering that those students then are no longer having to be funded in the public schools? They're getting funded wherever the other choice, or maybe they went to just a different district? So that money is following the students. Therefore, if a school district lost that student, they don't have to fund that student anymore. We've got to remember that this input and output work together. Okay? That was a point I wanted to make. Thank you.
Thank you.
Roger Boersman, 324 University Circle, Council of Austin. One point I forgot to bring up is I saw a survey of the whole state of Iowa, and not too long ago, and Potawatomi County has one of the highest tax rates per acre in the state.
Thanks, Roger. All right, anyone else in the room? Is there anyone on teams who would like to speak during this public hearing time? If so, raise your hand, and you will be admitted into the room.
You ready? Keep in mind, we have nothing to do with the school taxation. They're they're their own taxing entity.
We voiced our opinion to Trainer.
Yeah. Out at Crescent, we're almost 60% of our taxes are school. It hurts.
As a county board, I can I can vouch for this. We work very hard. We have to walk a very fine line. We have to maintain a balanced budget, which we have. I'm very impressed with the actions we've taken this this year already. But, you know, we're we are also under higher authorities, you know, the federal government, the state government. Really, there's we've been we are dictated to ourselves. And also inflation. You know, you look at gas taxes. We had a comment from our county sheriff not too long ago. Just uniforms for for county deputies and so forth has have doubled in the last year or two. And, you know, they get they get an allowance for that, but, you know, they're 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 in a hard place, too. And you talk about department heads. We work very hard to make to retain our employees, especially our department heads. You know, you look at the the county, the county attorney office. I think Matt Wilbur does a fantastic job at what he does. We do want to retain him. He's been here for quite a few years, you know, and he's an attorney. And he could go other places. And that's what we're facing. Our 911 operators are another example. We want to retain our 911 operators. We can't hire enough qualified applicants for those positions. And then, once they get employed and they look, they 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 learn their 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 duties, they can go other places, too. Across the river is one place. We're we're facing a lot of a lot of a competition with the with those those kinds of employment opportunities here in Potawatomi County, competition from across the river with Douglas County, Sarpy County. We have a great staff of county employees. And again, we want to retain those employees because they're great people. So again, we're working a very fine line, walking a very fine line. And we try our best. The five of us took no pay this year because we realized, you know, we're 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 right there on the front lines. And we understand, I certainly understand all of your concerns about taxes. It's again, we're very hard to walk that fine line, to balance our budget, and still to provide the services, county-level services, that we do provide. We may very well have to take a cut at some point. Like those cuts are going to be in number of employees and number of the type of county services that are available to all of us. So we'll we'll face that when when it comes.
One more question or one more statement, question, whatever? So what work has gone into maybe taking the burden off property, putting it somewhere else, maybe in the sales tax or some other revenue source to even it out? Because you know that non-property owners, you know, they don't have to go through the the additional taxes that property owners do. So, you know, maybe it's, you know, thinking out of the box on the different tax portions. Sales tax is a huge issue.
That'd be a state issue. We can't we can't do anything with sales tax. But the state is looking at that.
And you I'm sure you have rhetoric stayed on. I I guess I don't know what kind of interaction there is with county and the state as far as, you know, options. I mean, do you voice your opinion on what, you know?
Yeah. Have you ever been one of the legislative coffees they've had? Okay. And that's the best place for you to and us to speak to them. And then we have county days where we go up there and talk to them directly.
Okay.
So.
No, and and we did talk about that at the last conference. Thank you.
So the state last year in their legislative session, they made some changes to the property taxes. And they gave the state or the cities and the counties and the schools new instructions to work by. Larry, you pointed out the flaws in the form. Well, that was a new form that just came out, and I think they pieced it together thinking big picture. They weren't thinking drilling it down to a specific property. So I know that we've been collecting data from everybody who's called in, questioning the form, questioning the process. I'm planning on providing feedback back to the state so that they can understand what tweaks maybe they need to make on that form to make it more clear what they're trying to say. This is the first time that they've done this. Typically, when we have a budget hearing, we don't have public that comes. So this notice did its job by providing us a chance to hear from all of you, whether it was during non-working time or working time, but hearing from you what your concerns on. And I think that's probably a success that the state legislators had in mind. They wanted to put you in front of us so that we could hear your concerns firsthand. And again, I thank you all for coming out in the elements today and and coming to speak. We will, this is the first time we've had to do this, so we will think about how we can publicize two public hearings possibly next year if the state doesn't change the rules on how we can get more people to to visit. But I know that the cities, the school districts are having people show up for their meetings, and that's never happened historically, so the the statement is doing its job.
Question, did you mail out the statement or did the state?
The county mailed out the state, the statements.
We got ours on a Friday or a Monday meeting. That's a little bit close. You know, they planned on nobody being there. Had we not made phone calls, nobody would have been there.
And that's on the suggestion list of of things that they need to to take. But it was quite an effort, the county had, to accumulate the information from the cities and from the schools and feed it all into a formula and then send it to the state, and then the state sent it back so that we could mail out our print out our statements. And we had to hire a third-party company to put those statements together, but they went out in the mail according to the the timeline that we were provided. But we is just one of those tweaks. Yeah, five days.
Five-day turnaround timeline, which is. Exactly.
One more, can I make one more comment?
I think we're done.
For 31 minutes? Okay.
All right.
Make the motion to close the public hearing.
Right? Motion by Melvin, second by Shay to close the public hearing. Melvin, will you please call the roll?
Herman Miller.
Aye.
Supervisor, Rickman.
Aye.
Mel.
Aye.
Shay.
Aye.
Anne Jorgens.
Aye.
Mr. Barrier, you asked a question on the where the increase in costs came from. I want to address that for you. Through our property insurance increase and Workman's comp increase, that was about a $700,000 increase just for those two. Our health insurance for employees went up 400,000. And then salaries for our employees were part of that increase as well as, we're all aware, our fuel costs are higher, our rock for our roads are higher. Any kind of equipment that we either need in secondary roads or vehicles for the sheriff, those are higher. Our paving, any paving we do, whether it's asphalt, concrete, it costs more to do that. And last but not least, and if it were me, our prisoners would get a 10 cup of water and a bologna sandwich. However, we can't do that. We have to provide a balanced meal, and the cost of food for for that is is an increase as well. So we're doing everything we can, believe me. I'm with you. I think we pay plenty in property tax. We're at the point where we just can't take anymore, and I'm fully aware of that. But we still have to run the county and protect you. Real quick, since I've been on the board, the I can provide this to you if you need it. The levy rate for the general basic fund has went down 42 cents. The debt service levy rate has went down 23 cents. And the rural basic levy has went down nine cents. So believe me, I don't want to pay anymore either. This board works really hard to only levy what we need to provide services that you expect. We're pretty tight on this board, so we we. I don't want to raise taxes. But, you know, the costs and inflation and some of the things that the state does affects us when when the state give us the senior citizen discount on your property taxes, that exemption, I signed up for it, but guess what? They didn't provide any funding for it. So we're giving you money back, so now we have less to run the county with. And, you know, it's things like that 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 put a lot of pressure on us. You know, we have union negotiations that, actually, they went fairly well this year, but all those things. You know, we have union negotiations that, um, actually they went fairly well this year, but all those things, um, play a part in the levy. We're doing all we can, believe me.
Thanks. I, I was going to give you guys kudo by saying that you're actually one of the lowest increases at five point four percent. Los Central is fifteen percent. Can you imagine that? Uh, city of Council of Los is nine percent. Trainer was like six point six percent. Uh, I have stuff in O Valley that was nine percent. So, you know, you're actually low, on the lower side of all of the increases I've seen in my progress. So, um, but everybody still feels that from all the other areas.
One, uh, one more thing. Two years ago, uh, the state took over mental health. And this county had a thirty-nine cent levy for mental health. The state didn't make any requirements that you had to cut that levy. You could use it and spend it somewhere else if you wanted to. This board said that levy was for mental health. The state took over the costs. We dumped the thirty-nine cents. Where we were one of thirty-three counties that got rid of that levy altogether. Sixty-six counties out of the ninety-nine decided they were going to spend it somewhere else. So believe, that's just another thing that, uh, we, we, we did to try to do everything we can to lessen the burden on the taxpayers.
If I were to say one more thing too, uh, I was at a meeting, I spent maybe a month or so ago, other county supervisors around the area. Uh, Potawatomi County has an advantage that no other county has in our area. I'm talking Montgomery County, Cass County, Ringo County. Uh, we're still growing. Uh, our tax base is still expanding. People are moving in to Council of Los, to Potawatomi County. Uh, and that's, that is a big advantage. Also, it puts pressure on property values, you know? I mean, you, you don't have just other, your, 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 your farmer neighbor, uh, competing for your, if you want to sell your farm, but you have other entities, address, uh, address utilization, uh, residential growth, that kind of thing. Puts pressure on the values of, of property in Potawatomi County. Those other counties don't have that going for them. Uh, they, they are under the gun and they have a heck of a time meeting their budgets. Uh, but again, it's an advantage that I'll take. I appreciate it.
I'm from the Crescent area and that has changed so much since I've been a child. People are moving in and one of my neighbors just sold his house for over three quarters of a million. And there's about five other houses right by him that sold for five and six hundred. Every time they brag about making money on their property, our valuations go up and it hurts. You know, it's great when you sell. And then again, farm values out there are just, they're crazy. I, ten thousand an acre plus. And it's like, how can you make money there? So.
You can't. You can't.
No, it's, it hurts.
Has to stop somewhere.
This, this.
Trying to pencil a third of that out and make it pay, just pay for itself.
It can't.
It does work.
This board really appreciates everyone coming in and talking to us. We are listening to you. We're doing our damnedest to do what we can, okay, without cutting services. You know, our roads engineer, that'd be terrible if we get a blizzard like we did in January and three weeks later you're waiting for snowplow. They work pretty hard, those roads guys do. You know, everybody complains about different times. But then like Mr. Whitman said, our gravel costs, you go out to the quarry out here. I remember when it went up to seven dollars a ton. Wouldn't that be great? It's just crazy. And you do it per mile. I pencil it out. It's, just goes nuts, so. I want to thank everybody for coming in.
Yeah, I would, just thank everyone for coming in too. You can give them your chon line, but we have at least, and I think twice, done evening meetings for this budget. And had less people than we have here today. So we have done that, uh, and since, since my time being here. Uh, so I, I don't know what the, what the answer is, but, um, certainly, uh, would be open to that. So that's what we want to try to do next year. Then that'd be great.
When you did the wind towers, you had a lot of people here and you also had a lot of people in Oakland, so that was a nice.
Yes.
Yeah, the one in Oakland.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
All right. I will entertain a motion to adjourn this meeting and then we will reconvene with our regular board meeting.
So move. Say.
Second by Shay, second by Jorgensen to adjourn the meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion is carried. Thanks again for everybody for coming in.
Thank you.
You're welcome to stay.
I'll listen to you.